Speaker: I hope you have picked up a copy of the public hearing guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice which are on a table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda list in order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission's agenda. By doing this, you'll be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the county council. The Commission will not make a decision on every, on the petitions heard this evening. Typically, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at our next executive meeting in September. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting by August 25th, 2025 will be distrib- distributed to the Planning Commission Commissioners. In their executive meeting agenda packet, written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council who has a responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or secondhand presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by the other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker, and after each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor or in opposition and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the county council. The purpose is to make a crowd count part of the record for each petition. And next, we will have PC 24-25 Kiana Roberts.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is PC 24-25 Kiana Roberts. This is a request for a CUP in the C2 and FPC2 for a vehicle detailing facility. This is a 0.62 acre tract on the east side of Hall's Ferry Road, approximately 700 feet north of Lucas and Hunt Road. This site is in North County and on the aerial is bounded in red. On this larger aerial, Commissioners can see the floodplain on and around the parcel. On this land use map, Commissioners can see a mix of commercial and vacant uses. This is looking northeast into the site at the public hearing sign. This is looking south down Hall's Ferry. This is looking west across Hall's Ferry. This is looking north up Hall's Ferry at the site. This is looking southeast at the building. This is looking east at the northern property line. This is looking south at the eastern property line. This is looking southwest at the back of the building. This is looking northwest on the other side of the building. This is looking southwest at the southern property line. And this is looking northeast at the building itself. Next, we will hear from the petitioner.
Hi, my name is Terry Barnes. I'm representing the petitioner. I'll keep this brief. She is requesting a conditional use permit to do window tinting on this site. It's currently zone C2 and would need a conditional use permit to do window tinting. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the property.
So is this, is this a new owner or are we just adding window tinting to what's already being done there?
We're adding window tinting to what's being done.
No, that was the previous tenant. That was a previous tenant, so is this location unused and vacant right now?
It's being used as a detailing.
Okay, so it's used as, actually being used as a detail. Okay. I just recalls, always had a lot of tires out front.
Right, there were, and those have all been removed and cleaned up. And I even noticed on the picture, there's some other trailers and things that have been removed that were the previous owners.
Are there any change to the hours, to the building, to the lot, to anything?
No, except for the cleanup from the previous tenant. I think you see successfully a lot of tires and trailers. It took a while to, to clean the site up, which they've done. And will continue to do and make some minor cosmetic improvements. Thank you.
What, this time, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, are there any persons representing the group that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? And that being said, are there any persons here speaking for a group in opposition or concern? Are there any individuals speaking in opposition or concern? No? All right. At this time, I'd like to see a hand count of those in favor of this petition. One, two, three, four, five. We have more, five, six. Six in favor, in opposition, are concerned. Zero. Okay. Thank you very much. So it's six in favor and in opposition, zero. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you very much. And now, our presenter will be presenting PC 25-25 Midhat Salimovic.
Good evening, Commission. This is PC 25-25 Midhat Salimovic. The request is for amended C8. The proposed use is to be an indoor recreation center, telecom tower, advertising sign, and all C2 shopping district uses. The current tract size is 3.78 acres and is located northwest of LeMay Ferry Road, southeast of Interstate 55, and approximately 150 feet north of Longview Drive. Here you can see an aerial view of the site itself outlined there on the picture, as well as where it is physically located here in St. Louis County. Here's a larger version of that aerial view. And here is a land use map of the surrounding zoning. Here is a picture of the public hearing sign facing westwards. Here is the southwest view of the property looking down the road. Here's a northeast view looking up that road. Here's a north view looking towards the building. You can kind of see it right above the building, but there is a billboard located on the site currently as well. Here's an east view of the property with a better view of that billboard in the background. And then here's a little bit further back eastern view with, there is a cell tower, not specifically on the site, but it is located within that parcel tract. Here's a southwest view from behind the building. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Mark Doring, President of Doring Engineering, trying to retire, but still not there yet. But somebody would get rid of me, coming sooner than later, actually. And with me is Meado Selivic, and Meado is our petitioner this evening. He is the President of MP Sports, and he's excited about this possibility. Also this evening from Steve Bon Realty is himself Stephen F. Bon on his 52nd anniversary. How about that? And then also I got Brian McTune here from Steve Bon, and Brian is the real estate agent on this parcel. So with that, let's see if I hit the right button here. There we go. First of all, I want Meado just to tell you a little bit about his vision for this parcel.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Midhat Salimovic, and I'll be a potential owner of this property on LeMay Ferry if its onings approved. My background is in transportation and trucking, and we're doing also semi-truck and trailers storage. One is located in San Luis North County and one in Cahoke, Illinois. I do have two daughters, and one is seventeen and one nine, and they love playing soccer and volleyball. The reason, the reason I'm buying this in San Luis County property, there is now a whole lot sports facility, indoor sports facility in San Luis County, and it's very hard to schedule any spots for practices or games. This property that we are kind of representing now, we would like to convert to two soccer fields, five on five on five, and one is going to be a volleyball slash basketball court and one pickleball. As of right now, this property is banded, basically dumping station for trash and a homeless shelter. Thank you so much. If you guys have any questions, I'll be here with Mark to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thanks, Meado. Again, as Ben mentioned, here's our parcel. On this page, north is up, and that's LeMay Ferry, Interstate 55. And, boy, I did that too small. It's the former Show Me Lanes and it's 3.5 acres, 3.8 acres, and it's presently zoned C8. We're asking for a C8 for sporting event venture as well as C2 uses. And right there is Charter Communications is right there. That is a Freedom Temple to our west, and that there is the credit union. Also, I'm going to have to move here, guys, because I'm getting too old, but that's the cell storage back there, and they have some RV outside parking back there. That's Mel Town Plaza and Sam, Keller's Plaza is right behind where Sam's is at. That's some R4 family, single family across the street. It's been there for a number of years. Over here, we have, actually I got this commercial, and I did error. I just realized that's a residential property next to us. And then next to that is Snow Pro, which is a commercial slash industrial property. And we got residential across the street, and some multiple families also across Highway 55. This is just a blow up going of our site, getting LeMay Ferry down here, 55 behind us. And again, subject tract, C8, and we're asking for a C8 with all C2 uses. The building is 22,500 square feet. We intend to occupy that building. That building is in bad shape. We do plan to spend a lot of money fixing it up, new paint, new interior, new roofs, thing like that. We'll go through that shortly. The existing parking lot, we're basically keeping the same footprint of the existing parking lot. The existing parking lot is in bad repair, and we will spend a lot of money bringing it back to respectability. Communication tower there on our site, and there's also the billboard sign that Ben spoke of earlier. And the existing tree masses in this area remain the same. We're really not doing a whole lot of site work, but we do have a lot of repairs to do on the site. Shot from LeMay Ferry, again, there's the billboard. Again, there's the AT&amp;T Tower on our site, and over here on Snow Pro, that's an existing cell tower over there, but that's off our site several hundred feet. And the building, as you can see this picture here, is, hasn't been repaired. It's been, it's been abandoned since 2017 when they closed down Show Me Lanes. A couple existing site photos. This is the front, looking from the front right corner. This is the side. This is the back. Again, we do have people spending time here over in the evenings. My office building is about a quarter miles to the south, and I have not nearly as bad a problem because we're occupied, but I do remove things from people spending the night more often than I like to admit for South County. This is in the back behind the building. This is right at the, the billboard. You can see the trash there. That is the eastern entrance. Got a mattress there, which does get used. I hate to tell you that, but it gets used. And this is looking up in the cell tower, and it is also turning into a dumping ground at this point. And here's the cell tower back in our site. This here is a picture of the roof. The storm came through, and that's, that's a roof, okay? So the storm came through, and that's what it looks like just a couple of weeks ago. This morning, I got a phone from John Scanell. He called me, and John lives directly to our south, where that arrow points to, in the residential house there. John said, "Mark, I'm 82 years old. I've lived here for 45 years. I'd rather not run out to Clayton tonight. Can you tell me about your project?" So I said, "John, here's what we're trying to do," which is exactly what I just told you. And John said he believed it was wonderful. He said, "Do I need to go out there tonight, Mark?" And I said, "John, it's up to you, but if you want, I'll just tell them what they told me on the phone today." John said, "You know, 82 years old, lived here for 45 years. However, when you get somebody knocking at your door at midnight and asking for a glass of water, it's not exactly the ideal situation." You know, he has since put a fence where he can, but he is excited about this proposal for obvious reasons. Again, 2018, the Show Me Lanes Bowls was proposed to be a U-Haul rental storage, and that was rendering at the time. That was turned down pretty abruptly, and so that failed in 2018. There's been no petitions on this site since. Again, denial 2018. Our current proposal is we'd like to revitalize the existing site as possible, minimize the disturbance to the environment. We need a lot of repairs of the existing building to bring us back to its former condition. We're talking new roof, new paint on the building, new overlay parking lots and removals and replace a parking lot as required. December 4, and then we're going to keep the existing tree masses, and we're going to provide additional landscaping and landscaping islands so the cars know where to park, and also make the place look nice. This is a blow up of our site. Again, here's our existing building. The depth there is about 150 feet, and I can't read it close enough, and the width is also about 150 feet, okay? And I have no idea what that says.
To be renovated.
Thank you. So again, it's just existing and exterior renovations. This is one entrance on the south side of the building, entrance on the front side, and then entrance on the north side of the building. We saw pictures of those. And again, this is the existing parking lot, the billboard, the cell tower. I do have to go to that, guys. I apologize. Let me dig that up real quick. Okay, so here we go. This is not renovated. This was my printing, but again, the existing parking lots we're going to keep. We're going to repave them, replace them, make them look nice. Landscape islands are going to go in there. New landscape islands in here. New landscape islands here is for the channelization of our parking and defining the aisles where they're actually at, because right now there's no islands on the parcel. And again, some islands in this area here. This trash enclosure will be in the back behind the building, so you won't see it where it belongs. And that says the required parking spaces were, actually have about 135 parking spaces or so. The county calcs are just over 100, so we're going to have to ask for a variance because we have more parking spaces than is normally, normally allowed in this case by St. Louis County. Again, we're going to put new landscaping in these areas. All those areas, new landscaping, and the hours of operation, like most places like this, is from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday. There'll be some meetings we close earlier than that, but we, sports things go a lot of the, a lot of the nights because they're so limited. Hockey arenas go 24/7. The traffic is going to be just slightly more than what the original Show Me Lanes had, not a whole lot more. LeMay Ferry in this area, and I can tell you from my office building being there, me living there since 1968, it's kind of a dead low area of LeMay Ferry. There's four lanes there, and there's also a middle lane, so we don't anticipate any significant traffic considerations. Concerns about noise, you're going to have your normal noise, the same noise that you have with the bowling alley. The subdivision across the street, LeMay Ferry, they may hear something, but with the noise, normal noise of a four-lane LeMay Ferry, they're not going to hear a whole lot coming from our parcel. And again, the residents to the, to the left in this picture here, John is very excited about this project. This is just a sketch. It's going to change somewhat, okay? But of our interior, again, we had the entrances in those locations. Pickleball court possibly in this area, volleyball, basketball court in this area, and then Meado's passion soccer, soccer fields in this area here, okay? And you won't, these are not the big soccer fields. It'll be five on five in younger youth, things like that. You're not going to have 11 on 11. It's just not going to happen. Okay, we have a kitchen in here, a little kitchen, and this here is a little area for somebody to sit down and eat, have a drink, and enjoy the sporting things. And we have the office here at the front right corner, and we have some bathrooms in this area. Again, this is conceptual, but it's going to be something like this. And then we have some places for the, for the people to actually watch it and sit down and watch the sporting events. So in summary, it's a neglected property since 2017 in South County. We'd like to make it active again, stop the dumping of trash and stop the current transience problems on the site. Leave most of the site intact, major building renovations, and I mean major. Parking lot renovations, which is pretty major, and we just need to clean up the site and do some nice landscaping to make it respectable again. We're going to increase the value of this property, increase some tax revenue for St. Louis County of this vacant property, and we're going to provide needed athletic facilities for our youth in South County. And also call, improve the quality of some businesses in this area, hopefully. With that, we always appreciate your consideration, your time, and if you have any questions, Meado and I would be happy to try and answer them. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. This is Erveta, virtually. So what does it mean when you're saying C8 use and all of the C2? What are, what are we doing here?
Well, Erveta, what can happen when you, like, this was zoned for a bowling alley. I believe that. I got to go back and check it. You get so tight-casted into a specific use, and sometimes that use doesn't work out, so you ask for, that's considered, is that neighborhood, light neighborhood?
Yes, the C2 is the, is the lower intensity shopping district.
So low intensity shopping district. And really, I don't, you know, if that happens, they're not going to operate out of this building, so they'd probably be back in here in front of the Planning Commission before any of that could happen. So it's kind of a safety net just from doing this for years and years. I don't know that, what's going to ever become of that.
So the soccer, the recreation is in which zoning district?
C8, planned to commercial.
So you just said the word safety net.
Sorry, I'm sorry, what was that?
So you just said the word safety net earlier by asking for a C8 and C2 uses. Like, maybe the C8 is not going to work out. I don't, I need somebody to explain this better to me.
No, Erveta, that's exactly what it is. If the C8 did not work out, we spent all this money, and the sporting athletics doesn't go, okay? The request is such that we could come back and use these light neighborhood uses without having to come back in front of this, this assembly again in the next couple of years. But that's exactly what it is. So.
Mr. Chair, could I, could I add to this?
Please do.
Commissioner Williams, if I'm hearing your question, what I want to clarify is that a C8 planned commercial district can be requested by the petitioner for a discrete set of uses, but they can also, or instead, request the range of permitted uses from one of the straight districts. So this request is, is kind of two-part. They're asking for the specific use of indoor recreation facility, but then their request also includes, they're also asking for the range of permitted uses from the C2 shopping district. And as Mr. Doring indicates, that's to build in flexibility. If that discrete permitted use were not to work out, they're requesting that all the permitted uses from the lower intensity shopping district also be permitted uses in the C8 planned commercial district.
Ben, answer your question, Erveta.
It, it does. I haven't, I haven't come, let me say, I don't recall that I've come across a situation like this, a request like this.
That's a good question. Thank you. Christopher, you had a question?
Yeah, good evening. Who is MP Sports LLC? Is that your entity, Mr.? Have you done a project like this before?
No, that's, that's something new to me.
Do you have like approximate cost of redevelopment? You said you're going to be spending a lot of money on everything. Like, what's that mean?
Close, close to a million, maybe over.
What, what's that, what's that structure on top of the roof right now? What is that? That looks like a... What is that? That looks like a... Is that part of the H-backs? No, it's not a billboard.
Okay, apologize here, but... That there, okay?
Can you go back a little bit more?
Go back?
Is there another photo further back?
Okay, I don't know. There was a whole lot more besides. I think that was it on the pictures of the site.
No, there was a... Look at that. What is that, right there? What is that? Is that the HVAC thing?
Yeah, it's just close on that edge. Yeah, it looks a lot bigger than it is compared to the billboard sign on the other side of the building.
Okay.
I got you. Sorry about that.
That's all I have.
So I have two questions. The first one was related to the hours of operation. It seems like a lot of the facilities in the area do have 11:00 p.m. and midnight games for high schoolers, even on the 5V5. Is it something you would consider, just as they're talking about hours of operation and how late you would be open?
So it is very important for us to have those hours to make our numbers work, because this is, when Mito says he's going to spend a million after we buy the properties, I think he's going to be more than a million, okay? And again, that's just kind of what drives this type of development, and that's the common hours you see at, actually, Veta has the same hours at 21 and 270.
Oh, I was thinking that you need to be open even later, only because, again, they, a lot of the facilities like Veta have games for high schoolers, even in a 5V5 smaller setting, at 11:00 p.m. and midnight, because that's the only way they can get them in with the younger children. So I didn't know if you needed longer hours of operation beyond 11:00 p.m. So that was one question.
Okay, I'll let Mito answer that, then. I shouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might change. I mean, it may be by midnight, but we're estimating, you know, from 7:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other question, did you consider with the amount of parking, putting in a second entrance exit with all of the parents leaving all at the same time and going in and out of just one entrance, did you consider the second entrance?
We don't believe we need a second entrance for that, and then also the configurations of the lot. There's a, what I didn't go through, and I apologize, I guess I dropped that slide trying to shorten it up, is there's major stormwater and creek things that we have concerns with, as well as there's also site distance problems along that area there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question. You already own the site. You already own the suite. Okay.
He's owner under contract.
He's under contract. Okay.
I have some more, another question. The communication tower, do you foresee, or do you know if anyone's contacted the current owner about making it an active tower?
It is an active tower, and there's an easement across our property, across the parking lot and the driving lanes that gives the couriers, there's multiple couriers on that tower, it gives them access to that towers, but it's current.
And the billboard is currently also actively used?
Same thing, yes.
So as the property owner, you will own the billboard rights? I guess I don't know what I'm asking.
No, that is a good question, and I don't know the answer. So Mito, when you buy it, or you get the billboard and the tower rights or not?
No, so billboard is, it's sold, basically. They just have an easement to cross the lot and do the maintenance on it. Same thing with the cell tower.
Okay.
Got all of our questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, is there an individual that would like to speak for a group in favor of this petition? Is there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there an individual that would like to speak for a group in opposition or concern? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern? No, okay. At this time, could I see a show of hands of those that are in favor of this petition? We got nine, 10?
I saw nine.
Nine, okay. Nine in favor. Those in opposition? Zero. And we have our count of nine in favor, zero in opposition, and this petition is closed. Thank you very much. And at this time, we have a presenter. PC 26 and 27-25 McBride Land Growth LLC.
Just one moment. Good evening, commissioners. Before you, we have PC 26 and 27-25 McBride Land Growth LLC. This is two requests. One is for an R1 to R2 single-family use, and additionally, a PEU in the R2, proposed use as single-family residences. This is a 13.9-acre tract. This is on the east side of Dietrich Road on the north of the eastern terminus of Dietrich Glen Drive. Here you can see the property. It's two parcels outlined in the right side here and the countywide map to your left. This is a zoomed-out aerial of the property again. This is a map showing the surrounding land use. You can see the predominant single-family use with some park and recreation. This is the public hearing sign posted here. This is looking east into the property from the entrance. This is looking north on Dietrich Road. This is south. This is east to the interior of the site. This is east to the rear, further back, deeper into the site where the woods begin. This is south-looking interior to the site. This is west, looking out towards the drive to Dietrich Road. This is east, looking across the interior of the site to the home in the rear. This is west, looking to the homes and older structures near the front of Dietrich Road. And that is all I have.
We have the presenter for the petition.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name's Jeannie O'Miller. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner this evening. I'm the President and General Counsel. We have also some folks in the, with us, on our team that can help answer some questions if I can. So greatly appreciate this opportunity to present this project to you this evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Just a little bit about McBride. We are the largest home builder in Missouri. Last year, we closed and sold 1,008 homes. We've been in business. Next year, I'm so excited. We're celebrating our 80th anniversary. So we've been in business for almost 80 years. Very stable company, currently building in approximately 40 neighborhoods in the metropolitan area. And we have a substantial experience, long history of building new communities in St. Louis County. So just to talk a little bit about this site, I know you've heard just a little bit about it, but it is 13.9 acres. Property is currently zoned R1. It's surrounded by single-family residential land uses and, of course, Love Park. And we just want to be consistent with that land use in another single-family development. So the pending application before you is to rezone the site to R2 with a PEU. So we've kind of already oriented, but you can see to the north is Manchester Road. You can see predominantly surrounded by single-family residential development. So before we get into the site plan, just a few features of the product, of the plan. With the R2 PEU, it would equate to a density of about, I think, 40 lots. We're only requesting 33 lots on this plan, which I'll walk you through in just a moment. The product that we're proposing, I'll show you some elevations of that product, is a move-up product. It's a larger product. It's our Oakwood series. And we're going to have standard three-car garages on this site, so very exciting, very in-demand product for this area. Of course, new streets and sidewalks with this development. We're going to have 3.44 acres of common ground on the site. These are larger lots, all with new landscaping. We're working on a landscape plan. And common ground, of course, will be maintained uniformly by the newly-formed HOA, Homeowners Association. So you can see the 33 lots here, single-family detached. One road in from Dietrich with two round cul-de-sacs. You can see the green space and the areas for detention and the common ground that I talked about there in the lighter green areas. This is consistent with surrounding development patterns. As we go toward Manchester Road, like, that community to the north, those are duplexes. Those are smaller lot sizes than what we're proposing. We're proposing larger lot sizes than those. And our lot sizes, some of which are consistent with the communities, actually, to the south, too. So a very good transition from the smaller lots to the larger lots, a transition. Again, all single-family detached, very consistent with the development pattern that's surrounded here, surrounded by this community. So just to talk a little bit about the homes and the development itself before I show you some elevations. This is our Oakwood series. We built it in a lot of areas of St. Louis County. It's detached, single-family, full basements, three-car garages on this product standard. This is a variety of ranch, one-and-a-half-story and two-story plans. So probably our most popular plan here is the Pin Oak. I'll show you that. It's the one-and-a-half story, so that has the owner's suite on the first floor with, you know, kid or grandkid bedrooms on that second floor. Very wide-open kitchen to a great room, very, very popular plan. Fully-sided yards and landscape patches for each lot. We recently refreshed our elevations in this product, so we're offering some brand-new elevations for this project. Very consistent, complimentary with what's being developed around there. So these are some of the elevations, just a few. I just selected a few for some of what the product would look like. You can see we're doing a mix of ranch, one-and-a-half-story and two-story. So like, on the top line, in the middle, that's that Pin Oak product with that one-and-a-half story with that owner's suite on the first floor. Like I said, that is a very popular plan. You can see some two stories there. You can also see some ranches and all those three cars, which are very much in demand in the area. All of our buyers here will have the ability to go through our award-winning 10,000-square-foot design studio located in Chesapeake and St. Louis County to select their options and investment levels. It's very fun. It's a great buyer experience. Our buyers love it. They really get to customize their home here, work with an interior designs team who's certified on a national level to help them make their investment options. These homes just, our best price point right now, we're very early in the project. You'll see a sign probably starting from the 600s, and we'll probably average in the 800s, 900s. You'll see homes go over $1 million here in this location with this product. So again, we wanted to choose a product that was very consistent with the surrounding development patterns and stick with that single-family detached for that area, consistent with those surrounding development patterns. Very efficient design with the one-street layout. So significant common ground, like I talked about, new homes with very modern features, updates on the floor plans and the elevation, so we're excited about that. Very complimentary, consistent with the development pattern of single-family residential and lot sizes. This is all-for-sale products, so we're not, we don't build to rent at McBride. So this would be all, we would be selling to customers for ownership. We do not rent products. Wonderful addition to the area. We feel very complimentary. Positive conversations with staff about this project, so we appreciate all of the good communication with staff we've had on this and appreciate your consideration for this development this evening. We're here to answer any of your questions, the team is, and of course, any questions that come up from the audience. I really appreciate. We're very excited about this location, this product. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions?
So I'm understanding there's two homes on the site now?
I believe so, yes.
And those would be taken down?
As part of the project, yes. Was that your question?
So do you own all of the lots that are envisioned, part of this plan?
So we're owner-under-contract right now. We have not closed on the two parcels that comprise this tract. But once we take ownership and close on it, then we'll subdivide into the 33 lots that you see there. Yes, sir.
It looks like there are some older historic log cabins on that property. Is that correct?
So we have not, we will analyze that and see what the historic nature of those log cabins are. We are doing, we're in the middle of due diligence right now, doing soils analysis, analysis of the homes, things like that. So I don't know that they're historic, but we will do an investigation into that as part of our due diligence.
How would that be handled if they were? I can't imagine a log home that isn't historic.
Yeah. How would it be handled? I guess it depends on the integrity of the home. I mean, some of those can be moved. It just depends. We'll work with it. If it is deemed to be historic, we'll work with somebody to help us advise us on how to handle that, so. But we'll happy to share the results of that once we determine that, yes.
Can you build around them?
Not likely on this site, yeah, yeah.
And once, if this was approved, how long do you think construction of the 34 homes would take?
It's a great question. I mean, it'll take a good, you know, six to eight months to develop the site. It's pretty easy. I mean, it's small for us in comparison to some other developments, so development shouldn't take that long. And I'd anticipate with 33 homes that we should sell a minimum of three homes a year, so hopefully even more. So I mean, all said and done, you know, you're probably talking in and out in three years.
Oh, yeah. And are we expanding the entrance and exit for this subdivision? Or is it just going to stay?
Are we making improvements to the exit? I'm going to look to, are we proposing any improvements to that access point?
If anyone's going to speak, please come up to the podium.
Because right now, it's that gated entrance, right?
Yeah, we would not have it be, the community would not be gated.
Of course, yeah.
Good evening. Yes, we would have to bring that up to St. Louis. Rodney Arnold with Sterling Company. We would have to bring the entrance up to St. Louis County standards, which it is not currently.
Two vehicles could fit. For some reason, I did not see that. Is there sidewalks going along Dietrich Road?
I believe, yeah, I mean, that's a... Apparently, there's currently not, but typically, St. Louis County would request that they be put in.
Thank you.
So were you saying regarding the entrance and exit, it would be like a two-lane road?
Correct. It's your standard regular subdivision entrance that you'll see both to the north and south here. I guess the north kind of has the little roundabout that's not proposed, but it'd be similar to the entrance to the south of the development.
So you made reference to 40 lots, but then the plan has 33. What was the differentiation between, are you saying that if you just overall divided the site, it could have fit 40?
Correct.
And you're putting in 33? What was the determination on why you were asking to go to the R2 with the PEU versus staying at an R1 with a PEU?
Right, so the lot sizes, our minimum, the minimum lot size for the R2 is 8,000. Our lot sizes are ranging from 8,100 to 22,500 range. So we have a large variety of lot sizes, and so we actually go up to that 22,500, almost 23,000. But we do have a couple of lots that are getting close to that 8,000, so that was the reason.
Could we put the image of the development back up? And could you point to where there's going to be a privacy wall? Or I think you talked about some type of fence.
There are some retaining walls. I don't think I mentioned like a privacy fence or anything. Rodney, aren't those retaining walls? Yeah, those white, I don't know if you can see them, but the curved white lines on 22 through 20. Yeah, those white, I don't know if you can see them, but the curved white lines on 22 through 20. You see that? That's a retaining wall, right? Does that answer your question?
Right, so, so lots like 27, 26, 25, 24, those would be open to the woods or whatever that is in the back.
Yeah, they would just back up to woods. We, we do allow fences in our communities, but we require consistent fences. We have restrictions and we don't allow wood fences. And they, they have to be uniformed, so we have restrictions on those. So a homeowner could put a fence and enclose their rear yard there, but we're not proposing a uniform privacy fence back there. We're going to look at some tree preservation as part of our landscape plan back there to try to preserve some of those trees along that boundary.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. This is Erveta. So you spoke about doing your due diligence on the historic nature of those two log cabins. On that site plan there, can, can you identify where those cabins are?
It looks like, just best guess from the topo that we're looking at, that one is probably kind of straddling 1 and 30 or 32 toward the front. I don't have information on where the other one might be. Well, we can supply that information on exactly where it shows up on the site plan. We're still working on a survey.
That could, the, the location of those log cabins and if they are historic could really change your site plan there, your layout in the lots, the configuration.
Once again, we'll do that analysis as part of the due diligence and report that back.
I'm sorry, what would an analysis of a log home be? I mean.
Just some, get somebody out there to determine how structurally sound it is, how old it is, things like that, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may, it's a little difficult to hear the speakers and the speaker on the television with some of the chatter in the, in the audience.
We have just a little bit of order out. Any, any room out there, please? From when our speakers are speaking up here. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is the proposed retaining wall going to be maintained by the subdivision? Are the owners?
Good question. When they cross lot lines like those do, what we do in our communities is main, to have those maintained uniformly by the homeowners association. So that would be likely the plan here as well.
If not, thank you, presenters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
At this time, is there any individual that would like to speak in favor for a group? Is there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there an individual that would like to speak for a group in opposition or concerned? Yes, sir, come on down.
And while the speaker is coming down, I do want to inform that anyone who does speak this evening, Mel Wilson or Mary Kennedy is keeping time. So the two-minute limit to speakers who are in opposition or five minutes for someone who's speaking but for a group.
Larry Zank, I live at 1302 Dietrich Oaks Drive, which is across Dietrich Road and just a little bit to the south of the planned subdivision.
Excuse me, what group are you representing?
I'm representing the opposition and Susan Oaks Homeowners.
Susan Oaks Homeowners Association, thank you.
So we have several concerns. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for holding the committee meeting and letting us know about it. And also, we appreciate your concern about the log cabins. But most of us don't know they even are on the property. So I, I want to put the emphasis back on where our concerns are. Dietrich Road is a narrow road. The slope on the side opposite the subdivision that's planned is, I'm not an engineer, but I'm going to say it's about a 45 or a 65-degree angle, straight down. There's nowhere to build a shoulder or a sidewalk on that side of the street. So the road is going to have to be widened, I think significantly. The traffic on this road is already dangerously fast. And you can't see from the sightlines of the photographs, but it, there's a, a steep hill just to the north of the subdivision. And to the south of the subdivision, it's, it's a steep grade up. So you're, you're in an area where fire engines come through here every single night because they can't transit on Manchester Road. So we have fire engines on that road every single night of the week. I can assure you that anybody that lives along there will give you the time and place of that. So our concerns are, are not only the traffic that we have today, but what will be added with 33 homes, 100, 125 homeowners, FedEx trucks, UPS trucks on a narrow road that really is unsafe currently. So those are some of our concerns. The last thing I think I would say about the, the homes is this rezoning to have smaller lots, the majority of these homes are going to be on postage stamp lots. There's, there's no lot there, believe me. These are homes that are going to be placed in, in a postage-sized lot. And the duplexes that we're referred to are villas. They're not rental properties. They're, you know, seven to $850,000 villas. So I don't think the subdivision really fits into our area very well. Thank you for, my, your time.
Is there any other individual that would like to speak for a group? Okay, if not, for a group, yes, sir, come on down.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Daniel Abideli. I am one of the trustees of Dietrich Chase, which is the subdivision immediately north of this development. Our, our major concern, and we have more than one, but our major concern is the tree line, which we've enjoyed for many years between Dietrich Chase and the proposed McBride property, we want to preserve as a barrier and as an aesthetic separation between the two properties. The issue for us is the current property line has trees on both sides of the property lines. So it may be 10 or 15 feet on our side or 10 or 15 feet on the McBride side. So what I'm looking for is for some cooperation in preserving that tree line. And I'm asking if McBride would cooperate with us in walking that tree line.
They won't come back.
Okay, thank you. I got it, okay. And just as an aside, there's, there's, there are sidewalks below and above, north and south of the, the McBride development, but not at the McBride development. And that's a dangerous slope and it's endangered, dangerous to even walk. You have to walk in the road to get, to get from sidewalk to sidewalk. Any questions?
I'm sorry, did you note that there are sidewalks required or laid out?
I don't know. All I know is that there, there are sidewalks above and below the development, but not on the Dietrich side of that development. So there, you know, there's, there's a gap, which is on Dietrich Road without sidewalks.
The petitioner will also come back.
Excuse me?
The petitioner will also come back up and answer that.
Okay, thank you. Are we all set?
Yes, sir, thanks. Do we have any other individual? Please, I'm, I'm going to ask you this, no more applauding or booing when we're having our meetings here. Thank you. Do I have another, any other individuals that are speaking for a group? Okay. Any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern? One at a time, you can line up right over to the right, right there, and we'll take you as, as you come up.
Hi there, my name is Sharon Neer.
Before we start, I want all the individuals to know that you have two minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my name is Sharon Neer. I've lived in Ridgemont, which is the largest subdivision off of Dietrich Road. They talked a lot about the can, being consistent with all of the property and all of the research that they did. There are single homes off of Dietrich Road as well as the subdivisions or the streets. There's 17 homes down there. Ridgemont is the, the largest. Down Carmen Valley, there's 46 homes on Carmen Valley. And then there is no other place where there are 33 homes. It was very concerning to think that, we were upset thinking that 66 cars have the potential to be added on that street, but it's more concerning with more. So thinking that they've specifically thought that this would flow into this community was not well thought out because it does not fit well into this community. So 33 homes is not like 17 homes or 17 homes or single-family residents flowing onto Dietrich Road. So the amount of more traffic that are going to flow onto Dietrich Road and the size of the lot is not consistent with what is currently in that area.
How many homes were in your subdivision?
Pardon?
How many homes are in your subdivision?
Ridgemont is the largest and there are 240, Karen, 245. And just, I counted and on Carmen, from Dietrich to Huntley Heights, there are 45 homes. So it's almost as, they're going to try to add as many homes as that. So it's not the same at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Missors, my name is Phil Helmick. I live on Dietrich Chase on the north side. And I just want to reiterate what our trustee said, and that is, to all the folks on the north side, there's a tree line behind us that's beautiful. It's frankly, one of the big reasons we bought there. I would assume and I would think there would be no reason why that tree line wouldn't stay in significant part. I, obviously, the lots have to get developed, but that's a big concern that I want to raise. But the real reason why I'm here is, and I don't know, I, I don't know if any of you all are aware of this. I don't know if McBride is aware of this or Sterling or anybody. But there are two lots in this area that have experienced substantial slope failures. Very deep lots and they've, and they failed. There's litigation over one of them. There's probably litigation coming on the second one. One of them is on Dietrich Glen and backs right up to Lot 14. The other one is further to the north from Dietrich Chase, which is the next set of villas, which is Dietrich Place. I don't know if this is the right venue to, to raise this issue, but I think it's a concern. There's, it's, it concerns me that there's two of them out there. And I think there must be a reason for it. So I really want to make you aware of that and I want to, and I don't know how it gets handled. I don't know if these folks are aware of it. But we, the last thing we need is another subdivision with a lot, a slope failure coming down into somebody else's yard and creating problems. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name is Karen Young and I am an original resident of Ridgemont, 41 years. My concern is everything that has been said. It's an extremely hilly area. There are innumerable natural springs that have sprung up in my subdivision. But more, on the front page of the St. Louis Post-Dispatch on Monday, "Project Raises Flood Concerns," and this is about a McBride property. That has caused erosion. It has caused sediment in the creek. We have creeks running through this area. It is, there are contaminants from the concrete. I am very concerned about the environmental damage that could be done to the area. These are all things that were, have, McBride has been fined by and in, because they have been found negligent in preventing these problems. And they say they rectify them and then more complaints come forward. I'm concerned that this environmental issue, besides a whole erosion issue, is going to be a big catastrophe for all of us that live around this area. Thank you very much.
Please wait till you're at the microphone to state your name.
Leslie Gentry, I live in the Indian Hill subdivision, two streets over. My parents built a home in 1956 off Indian Hill Lane. It was a three-acre property. Grew up there, lived, lived in the area majority of my life. I'm handing, what I'm wanting to point out is Dietrich Road was established somewhere in the 1800s. There are some maps coming down. John Dietrich had a log cabin which still stands on Dietrich Road, 19, or I'm sorry, 1857. There are some maps coming around showing Dietrich Road in 1937 versus 2024. There's been no changes. It's a winding road. Per St. Louis County Traffic Count study in 2017, there's over 4,000 cars a day. That was in 2017. It's gone up since then. There's no electric light at Dietrich and Manchester. There is, there are no restrictions of when you can make a left turn. Per a sunshine request I made to St. Louis County Police, there have been over 24 accidents in the last three years. That's as far back as I went. The, what should be noted, too, is that prior to the Two Manellos buying that property in 2012, the prior owners approached several developers to try to sell this 14, near 14-acre tract. All of them walked away from it. What wasn't pointed out by McBride's son representative is it, it's an 85-foot descent from Dietrich Road to the back of the property where it abuts Love Park. So it's a very steep, steep descent. And so one of my questions is, has there been any sort of geotechnical investigation as to the soil? Because right now, per the paperwork they submitted, there's a hydrologic soil.
Mr. Chair, that's two minutes.
Hydrologic soil.
Could you wrap it up, ma'am? No, you just, I'll give you another minute.
Okay. Which means that the, that it has the highest amount of runoff from heavy rain. So that would be one of my questions. Is that from rock? Which prior developer said it was very rocky. Is that from rock or is that just from the clay soil? So is, has there been a geotechnical investigation? The only other issue I was going to break, bring up, again, lot size is very questionable because I don't think any of those homes that she showed elevations for would fit on that 8,400-square-foot lot. And it's also of interest that McBride and Sons has 44 complaints on Federal Business Bureau over the last three years, only 18 of which have been closed. The next three large developers, including Fisher Home, has three complaints. McKelvey has zero, Fisher for two. Those in the order of revenue. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Luanne Muleisen, and I actually live on Dietrich Road, right across the street to the northwest. So the property actually is right catty corner to us. As everyone's mentioned, the, I do have great concern about the traffic. And the grade is exactly what that gentleman said. When you exit my driveway, it is so steep, you cannot see the driveway across the street. So if somebody's coming down, I can't see them when they're coming out. So that was created when they repaved, I think it was maybe 2004, when Dietrich Chase, when those villas went in, that was repaved. And so it was raised another foot, so that increased the problem. And I can only imagine when they repave here, I don't know how it can be adjusted. So the traffic is a problem. And the other thing I have a great concern about then is, of course, the drainage. I don't know, when we're on the low side, all that water just runs off. And I realize that MSD does a good job in sorting that, and that would be requirements in this subdivision, but it is an issue. And I have a personal issue. We have never used the county trash at our house because there is nowhere at the road to put our trash can because of the steep grade. So in this, if we could get that corrected at our house, that'd be great. We've had access to a commercial dump for all these 25 years, and we have actually hauled our trash out the whole time we've lived there. But that access is gone, so now our children are helping us. Anyway, I would love to be able to put my trash can at the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mike Warner. On this diagram, I will, I'm in the corner on the left, so I'll be surrounded on two sides by the new development. I wasn't really compelled to speak today, and I've got respect for the current homeowner in McBride for development in St. Louis County. But some mischaracterizations by McBride, some you've heard from previous speakers, I won't belabor, but the range of lot sizes, I would ask that the commission look at those closely. There, it is true, there's one that they planned for 22,000 square feet, but the vast majority, more than 25 of them, are 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. So these are sizably smaller. My lot is a one and a half acre lot. My neighbor's lot is a one and a half acre lot that will be surrounded by 8,000 square foot lots. So the characterization that these fit right in in the neighborhood is factually untrue in my view. They also, the comment around common ground, I would just highlight, the common ground at the bottom of this diagram is like a water keeping station, I believe, or like runoff. It's not a park or something. And the rest is in the back abutting Love Park, which is, again, not really accessible to all of us as neighbors as common ground or something. And I would further reference some of the other comments on tree line support, that if this development were to go through, would look to work with McBride on some type of tree line support with our lot edged on two sides by this development and all of a sudden just fences instead of the trees that we have today. And finally, kind of a dispassionate view here, but this runs off into Love Park. And so while they're spending six to eight months on the grading, on the utilities being put in, I would believe truly that runoff would be a serious issue at Love Park and the streams and creeks around Love Park area. It would all just wash into Love Park. So from a county parks perspective, it seems like a view with this intensity of development here, and the grading will run straight to Love Park. It seems like a question for the parks as well to look at, at least something to plan for. Thank you for the time.
Appreciate it. Next.
Good evening. Just a couple more words about.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Logan Wall, and I live at 248 Dietrich, which is adjacent to the lot. I actually spoke to an archaeologist already about the 185-year-old log cabin, and we discussed how it is directly across the street from the much more famous John Dietrich House. And so it's possible that those two properties are connected. So I'm very glad that there is going to be some sort of study or evaluation of that property. It's even possible that it was a slave quarters or something associated with a more famous building. I do want to ask, how will the public find out about the final disposition about that cabin and what the results are? Also, I noticed on the project, the planting schedule includes 36-inch-tall burning bush. This is known to be an noxious invasive weed, causing environmental degradation, per the Missouri Department of Conservation. The sale of this plant has recently been banned in Missouri. So there are many similar native shrubs widely available for sale that will not infect the neighborhood with noxious weeds. So I'm hoping that McBride will remove Burning Bush from its planting schedule. And finally, I also would like to work with McBride about the sidewalk issue because my property has a very tall hill, right straddling the property line where the sidewalk should go. And if they need to talk to us about that, that would be great so that we could, if a sidewalk is indeed possible there, which I'm not sure that it is, it should connect to the rest of the sidewalk system for the neighborhood. Otherwise, people will come down the sidewalk that McBride has built and have nowhere else to go, they'll just simply have to turn around and go the other way. So I am ready to hear from McBride if they want to work with us on reshaping the hill and working on the sidewalk. Thank you.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? Are you saying you're on Seema Lee Lane?
Yes.
That's where you are?
That's not really a, that's kind of a Google Maps, I don't know what.
But that's the property that we're talking about.
Yes, that is my, Seema Lee Lane seems to be the name for my driveway.
Got it.
According to Google Maps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Daniel Colditz. I live at Lot 11, Dietrich Glen Drive, which is to the south of the proposed development by McBride, very close to what would be the eastern terminus of the proposal. And although you have my comments in an email that I sent to the commission, I'll just go over them briefly. Four main things. Number one, concerned about the damage to me and to my neighbors and the value of our property from what we believe will be much smaller lots and smaller homes than what currently exists at Dietrich Glen Drive. Number two is the public safety concern. We have a two-lane road on Dietrich Road. It's 25 miles per hour. It's heavily congested at Manchester Road. It doesn't need more traffic created by what could be hundreds of cars and people bringing lawnmowers, et cetera. Third would be the impact that I see to Love Park. Council for McBride had some nice slides, but I didn't see one showing the view to the eastern terminus looking west from Love Park, from Muffin Shelter specifically, which is, which is what people would be using. And I wouldn't want the view of the woods torn down and looking at suburbia when I go out there for an outing for a picnic. It's just not what we would in gender happening. Finally, although it doesn't necessarily go to land value, it's quality of life. And I know everyone who's a county resident and everyone in this audience is concerned about that. We're not, we're not here because we want to make a profit. We're here because we're concerned about our quality of life.
Mr. Chair, that's two minutes.
And so I'd ask that you give consideration to that as well, when this entire woods is destroyed, and our view is going to be a subdivision of smaller homes and lots. Thank you. Questions?
My name is Musa Hattak. I live at 1503 Dietrich Glen Drive. I've lived there since 2001, 2002. I'd like to say a few things. One, on Redwood Forest Drive, the neighborhood there, it's further left. And down by Reflection Cove Apartments, down the hill, I see and stop for many deer already. And, you know, there are many crushed carcasses of smaller creatures that stain the roads already. Before the current owners of this land came in, there was woods here. And, you know, it's, there's going to be more land taken. And frankly, I feel that this proposal is disruptive. It's disrespectful, this many homes on this size of land. Why? And I'd like to point out that McBride recently underwent a lawsuit against them by their, you know, former subcontractors, builder's block. It's just been happening in the past few months for about $10 million, I think. And, you know, profit is okay, but Dietrich Road is becoming denser every decade. And something in the human soul needs space and silence, you know, going back to what was said about quality of life. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you all.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Edwards, and I'm in the Dietrich Glen subdivision immediately south of the proposed area. I want to echo just a couple of themes that I've heard over the last few petitioners, a few folks speaking, excuse me, that I would share. One is, obviously, the petitioner claims that it's inconsistent consistency with the area around it, but as anybody who lives there will tell you, posted size lots on the neighboring community don't do anything for either our quality of life or the property values in the area, and it's nothing like what's immediately around it. It's, the other thing that I'm concerned about is the log cabin that was discussed earlier. It's concerning to me that there was no awareness of it and clearly no perceived value placed on it and no historical due diligence that has been done. I question as well their claim that they'll do the due diligence in a way that is satisfactory to those who live around and care about the history of the area. Others have spoken about how Dietrich Glen is dangerous and has a lack of ability to handle more traffic. And then I would just echo the concern around Dietrich, sorry, about the steep descent to Love Park. There's a significant amount of decline in the landscape that you can't see from the pictures that are proposed. It is incredibly steep, and to be perfectly honest, we didn't know that it could be built on because the descent is so deep. And as someone else pointed out, I think it's telling that other builders have passed on this in the past, and that McBride Homes, who, as others have pointed out, have questionable records and questionable business practices, is the one that's being willing to take this on, clearly to the detriment of the neighboring community.
Good evening. I'm Dave Bergner. I live on Dietrich Glen Drive, so I'm just south of the development. I guess, a couple of things. One, previous, it's my understanding, the previous developers turned down projects in this area. One, because the two cabins are old slave cabins are behind the old farmhouse, and they were, I thought they had been designated as historic properties. And I think that that was one of the things that restricted their use, and they'd be on lot like one and two up there. The other thing, I guess the biggest thing in my mind is that, what's the purpose of zoning? I mean, these areas were zoned for houses of certain size lots, certain size developments, certain house density. And so they're already zoned. Whole purpose of zoning is to try to keep the area the same way. So I think that if anyone's going to develop in there, you might as well have them develop in such a way that they don't have to change the zoning. And it's been also, what I've found is almost unanimously, and the people I've spoken with in real estate, that the property values in that kind of development are going to go way down, and that's going to, using comps and everything else, that's, they almost unanimous, well, not almost unanimously, felt that that was also going to help drive down all the property values in the area. So I don't know why we would need to change the zoning, because there's nothing wrong with the zoning the way it is, only just to try to, kind of the analogy, stick a trailer park in between two nice subdivisions. So anyway, that's one. And the road's terrible. I mean, it's narrow, it can't be widened, so you're going to have big problems there. Thank you.
But I was waiting to see if anything I had to say was already said. My name is Diane Carl, and I live on Dietrich Glen, which is south of it. Going to probably read this to y'all because I'm a big speaker. My big question, McBride, would be, if we kept this at R1, how many houses are they going to build? I kind of want to reiterate what Dave just said. Why do we have this zoning if they're going to change it? So that is my big question, how many houses do they think they're going to be building if they don't get this rezoning? And I think McBride, they're going to build as many houses as you let them, they're going to sell these houses, they're going to leave. They don't care if they have any continuity in lot size or specifications with the other houses in our community. My husband, myself, and my neighbors up and down Dietrich Road have made this community our home. We built our homes under the current R1 code as it was written and intended to be followed, and we will continue to live here after McBride has taken their profits and left. I'm asking you to consider the community aspect of your decision and vote with the majority number of homeowners to keep the property R1 and require a lower density of houses as the code intended in order to preserve the integrity of our community. We love our community, and we would like to keep it. And I know that, you know, people like to build houses, and they should be able to, but I feel that the zoning should stay the same. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Brady. I currently reside in the Dietrich Glen subdivision, which is directly to the south of this proposed development. I have lived there for 22 years. One of the many reasons I enjoy living there is the beauty and serenity of this area. It has basically gone untouched since I moved in there, full of trees and wildlife and peace. Even though this is an urban area, it very much feels like a rural area due to the spacing of the housing and all the green areas, trees and wildlife. I strongly oppose this development by McBride. I don't want to repeat all the, all the things that people have already said, that's kind of some of the things I were going to say, but what I will say is this, let's talk about the purpose of zoning ordinances. Zoning ordinances serve to regulate how land is used within a specified area. The primary purpose is to promote the public health, safety, and welfare by separating incompatible land uses, controlling building density and design, and ensuring orderly development. They also help to maintain property values and preserve the character of neighborhoods. I don't know if you know this, but currently on that property, the man that owns that house, or that property, built a house there 12 years ago. This is a house that's 5,300 square foot and currently has a value of over $2 million. I've, you know, I've heard of tearing down dilapidated housing to build newer, better houses, but not the opposite. This, this is crazy. This overcrowded development does not fall within the basic, the area. It is, it does not fall within the alignment and the character that be established around the community, specifically the design and density.
Mr. Chair, that's two minutes.
Okay. I will just say, approving McBride's change of zoning request will go against everything that zoning ordinances serve to protect. Thank you.
Did we have another speaker? I think we have one more speaker. At the last speaker? Okay. Justice, would you like to come up and rebuttal? I thought so too, but I do not.
Thank you. I took some notes, so hopefully there was quite a bit of repetition, but I'll go from my notes on the topics that I heard. So.
So, I did hear traffic in the condition of Dietrich Road. We're not required to do a traffic study with a development of this size, but we have already engaged a traffic consultant just to give us some preliminary advice. We're pending, that's out there, so I'm happy to share the results of that advice when we get that.
Are there lights on Dietrich Road?
At Manchester Road?
Right outside the development. Are there streetlights?
A traffic light?
Like, lights for night.
Oh, streetlights.
Streetlights.
When we're having these discussions, it's just, we're the commissioner presenting right now, okay?
I am not aware of streetlights along Dietrich Road, but I don't, I'm not 100% positive. I haven't done an investigation up and down.
Yeah.
Tree preservation, I did hear about that. We are working on a landscape plan right now, and so, as part of that, we'll determine how many trees we can preserve, so that analysis is being done. I will say there are some boundaries where we're grading right up, and you heard the steep nature of the site, so it does require some grading. There are some boundaries that we're going to be grading right up, that we anticipate right now grading right up to the edge. But, happy when we get the results of that, to share that with the audience, particularly those that are adjacent to us as we undergo that analysis. And part of this is just understanding that, as we zone, we're in the beginning stages of this project, we just got an under contract, we conduct due diligence simultaneously with the zoning. So, all of the geotech reports, the surveying analysis, the analysis of the log cabins, the traffic analysis is being done simultaneously with this. So, that is not all done by the time, just for everybody's education, by the time we submit a zoning application, that's, that analysis is underwent as we go and move through the process. But happy to share the results of all of that as we move forward on that. So, I heard a little bit, the geotech question, that we have ordered a geotech report that is not back yet, to the best of my knowledge. I haven't seen that yet, but we have ordered it. I heard about stormwater. You can see on the site plan that we do have two areas for detention. The site, you can see, probably know that little creek runs through there, and so, the site's kind of going to go like this. So, we don't anticipate, certainly, we're required not to increase any runoff on the adjacent properties as part of this development. That will be approved and permitted by St. Louis County and MSD, and we will adhere to those requirements. We are providing for two detention areas on the site in addition to help with that and be consistent with that. I heard a question about common ground. The common ground, we thought, would help with actually the views of Love to put that nice buffer next to Love. But common ground, just clarification for one speaker I heard, is not open to the public. It's just for the use of the residents that are there. So, that's not, no matter where we put common ground in a community, it's not a public park. It's just for use of residents of the site. And then I heard about lot sizes. So, I absolutely believe that this is consistent with the area. To the northern two subdivisions closer to Manchester Road, you have lot sizes averaging in the 4,300 range, and you have, to the north of that, average lot sizes in the 3,900 range. To the south of us, you have lot sizes approximately 15,000 to 14,000 to 15,000, and then you have going up to 19,000 further south of us. So, our community being in that 8,000 to 22,000 range is entirely consistent, and in fact, much larger than the two communities to the north of us, immediately adjacent to the north of us. So, the lot sizes, again, larger than the two communities immediately adjacent to the north of us, so entirely consistent, and a good transition to the larger lots to the south of us. I think that kind of takes care of my notes on what we had there. If there's anything I'm missing, be happy to.
Is there anything that you noted that we missed here?
So, what's the, what's the procedure for sharing the results for the studies for the log cabins?
We can share that with staff, and it'd become part of the public file on this case. We'd be happy to. I took down some names, and we would be happy to reach out to a few of the, particularly the people that spoke in the beginning that represent homeowners groups. We'd be happy to reach out to those folks, and we can get their information from staff, from the speaker cards that they filled out this evening, so.
Lot shifting.
Oh, yes.
Was that the neighborhood to the south or the north? Who was it that spoke about that?
It was one of each.
Okay, one of each.
So, we'll definitely analyze that. I appreciate that information very much, and that's why these presentations are so good. You do learn something from the neighbors, so I appreciate that information. Our geotech will work with that and share that information with that geotech consultant, make sure they're aware of that and look into that. So, thank you very much.
Yes. Just, there's a question about the Burning Bush.
Oh, yes, thank you. I did forget that on my list. Thank you, sir. The Burning Bush is shown. I actually did read the same article that the person who brought up the Burning Bush. I'm not sure that that's in effect yet in Missouri, but it is coming soon. Definitely, we can look into that and replacing that. That's not an issue. We'll talk to our landscape consultants about that. So, I appreciate that comment. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. It was on my list. Forgot it. So, we're very excited. We know that there's no vote this evening, that this will, there'll be more staff reports and revision and discussion, so we're very excited. We are open to questions, continuing dialogue with the community surrounding us, and we're very proud and excited about this development. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
At this time, can I see a show of hands of those that are in favor of this petition? Those that are in favor of this petition? And those opposed?
Please keep your hands up for a moment.
Okay. So, the hand count is three in favor and 42 opposed. Thank you, and that concludes this petition.
I think that's the end of our agenda. I don't think we have any executive.
If everyone could please make your way out of the chamber, the commission does need to conclude their meeting. If everyone could please make their way out of the chamber. If you're having a conversation, the commission does need to finish their meeting. Thank you.
Can we please clear the hall?
All we have is adjournment, correct?
Yeah.
Please do not stop and have conversations.
I need a motion for adjournment, please.
Solo, or second?
First and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have it, and we are adjourned until.